Good morning, everybody. This is the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners for Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is nine AM exactly. And today's agenda, action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place your cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda anytime. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoints. Board of County Commissioners convene as other boards, members of the board. County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, Board, and the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board. And during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. The meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. And we'll have roll call today. All Commissioners are in quarters. Today's invocation, we've got a minute here, will be Mr. Will Corley. And I will have everybody rise.
I want to say one thing. The wise prophet once said that when you're in the service of your fellow man, you're in the service of God. And so it'd be fitting, and I appreciate the opportunity to open this meeting with prayer. Our most kind and gracious, loving heavenly Father, we humbly come before thee at this time at the opening of this Commissioners' meeting for the Lyon County, State of Nevada, United States of America. We're grateful for the blessings of our family, of our friends and associates. Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to serve our community, our county. Ask that thou would continue to bless us, that we may have success, that we may always keep those members of this county's best and all that lies within. Father, now we ask for thy Spirit to attend this meeting and do so humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united under God, indivisible, wherever taken justice for all.
And also, Mr. Corley, thank you. You're coming to us from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during the public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. I see I do have a hand up on Zoom this morning. Do I have anybody in chambers? Nobody's coming up, so we have Mr. Jeffrey Freshman.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Freshman. During the last Board of Commissioners meeting on February second, I spoke to the Commissioners regarding the adverse impact that the current development was having on my neighborhood. Excuse me. I am pleased to report to you, two weeks later, a marked improvement in the issues that I addressed. The developer at the Heritage Ranch Project has taken steps to clean the construction site, which has had a positive effect on my neighborhood. I would like to give a shout out and thank the board and the Community Development Division in Lyon County. I especially want to recognize Louis Cariola and Commissioner Jacobson for their personal engagement in seeking a resolution to problems we have been experiencing in our neighborhood. These were great first steps, and I hope we continue to see that develop, continue to mitigate and the adverse impacts on our neighborhood. Hopefully, we will now, they will now take the required steps to control the dust coming off the project. Thank you. Thank you, board. Thank you, Mr. Cariola. Thank you, Mr. Jacobson, for your help in this matter.
Any other public comments? Okay. Move on to item five for possible action review and adoption of agenda. I believe there was an input from the county manager.
Yeah, yes, sir. I did get a request to pull fourteen A.
Okay, so we will pull fourteen A from today's agenda. Any further agenda changes? If not, then I will look for a motion to accept the agenda with item fourteen A pulled.
I'll move that we accept the agendas as amended with item fourteen pulled, fourteen A.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for the agenda, five zero. We have a time certain at nine o'clock. It is nine oh six, and that is for presentation only. Update from Waste Management on current activities with the waste franchise agreement.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chair Hockaday, members of the board. I'm Kendra Costa. I feel the contact manager for Waste Management. Thank you very much for having us back today. With me is Jessica Jones, our area manager for Waste Management. We are excited to launch this new franchise. I'm going to check a slide here. The poll button, let me. Am I pointing in the wrong direction? Okay. And thank you for working with me. So we're excited for the launch of this new contract, which starts on March first, and which will bring customers lower collection prices, extra cart rentals, new punch card style dump vouchers, twice annual neighborhood cleanup days, a household hazardous waste collection, collaboration with fire, the new fire districts and transfer station, at the transfer station located and a new transfer station located in Silver Springs. I'm getting ahead of myself, but before we get into that, we've been asked to talk about service interruptions due to weather. Thankfully, not as bad as last year, but we're still experiencing some, especially out here. So I want to start with how a collection truck is different from other vehicles, just really briefly, because you'll hear people say, well, the gas delivery truck was able to get out here, Amazon was able to get out here. And those trucks get lighter as they go on their routes. Our truck gets heavier as it goes on our routes. So just looking at what a collection truck is, they weigh sixty thousand pounds fully loaded with wet garbage. Generally, not quite that heavy, but when the weather's bad, that's how heavy they can get. And they are rear wheel drive and they have two axles, so eight tires on the back, two steer tires on the front. And they do chain the vehicles. You can see in this image here that they chain the vehicles. But that, the downside of that is that it can rip holes in the road every time the truck starts, stops in front of a house and then has to start again. And it can damage the road in front of a house. And as the weight of the trash increases, those back wheels are pushed into snow and mud. So less weight is carried by the steering tires. It makes it a little less stable, which is often people think, or they'll say, you know, well, should travel better because it's heavier than my vehicle? But the heavier it gets, the more pushed, it gets pushed into a non-paved road. So that's a concern, and we don't want to damage those roads as well. When the truck, the back of the truck gets heavy and the front of the truck has trouble steering, they need more room to turn around or more room to manage a road. I don't know about you, but when the roads are covered in snow, I might tend to drive down the middle. So that makes it a little bit more difficult for traffic passing on either way. And but if a truck gets stuck because it can't quite turn on those roads, then we've got to pull in a special tow truck all the way for Reno, and we are not at the top of their list to get them out, so it can take a little while. If that truck gets turned sideways on a, on a road, not only is the truck driver not going anywhere, but everybody who's already at work is going to have trouble getting home, and everybody who's at home is going to have trouble getting out. So we want to try to avoid those situations whenever possible. And next slide. And it's not, it's not just snow, but the roads can get really muddy. And so we want to try to drive around those when they're slick and soft, because it's going to dry out eventually and become rough for the people who live there. And those are going to have to be regraded, so we want to try to reduce damage to those roads, but also we don't want to get stuck in some of that slick clay-like soil. And, and a note for people who are in a paved neighborhood, your street may be clear and paved, but sometimes the challenge is actually somebody else's neighborhood. The road that gets to you can be damaged or difficult to pass. So what happens when this occurs that the truck can't get down a road? Or we're having storm? Next slide, please. Our typical plan for recovery is going to be the next service day. I'm sorry, that's kind of difficult to read. So customers are going to get an outreach that says, please, put out twice your amount of garbage next week and we'll be back. So the routes are created so the drivers have a full workday, five days per week, except for obvious severe weathers. Drivers will begin their days attempting service and only enter out if it's unsafe to do so, to continue with the route. And when that happens, the WM standard recovery plan is to return the next scheduled day and collect twice each lead amounts of trash. Returning on the next scheduled service day helps give those roads a chance to clear and dry out, but it also keeps all customers on a consistent collection schedule. So if we come back to that same route the next day, then people who were expecting service that day aren't going to get it if they wanted to. And that creates a domino effect of repeatedly rolling collection days. When interruptions occur, WM will text, call, or email with service updates. Many customers will start their service twenty years ago with a landline or a cell phone that they don't have anymore, and they don't want to update their information because they're afraid that they're going to get unnecessary calls. But if they don't update their contact information, and this is something we can't mail to them because it's urgent. If we don't update their contact information, we can't reach them. So we urge everybody to provide an email address or phone, and then the customer is able to select how they want to be contacted with that information. And you can manage your services with WM, my WM app. A lot of us are concerned about signing up for those apps because often you are forced into auto pay, and that makes it difficult to budget. I don't like to do that personally. The nice thing about the WM app is you do not have to opt into auto pay. So you can use all the services, see if the truck's coming, get your service alerts without having to sign up for an automatic payment. You can pay online if you want to, but you don't have to. And the severe weather causes multiple collection delays, so we didn't come this week and we can't come the next week. Now we're into the third week. Then WM, I will be contacting our county contacts to discuss our recovery plan and explain how we're going to get that garbage off the ground. And next slide, please. All right, so, and I'll answer questions on that afterwards if you like. And let's get back to March first, the rollout of new services. WM has mailed welcome packets to all current customers to make them aware of the new services and the price changes that will automatically take effect on March first. And I provided a little packet there so you guys can see what they're getting in the mail. This packet does include the redesigned vouchers. For the county's request, under the new contract, the vouchers are broken down into quarter yard punch cards, and they do not expire year to year. We have already started accepting these punch cards at the transfer stations that are listed on the voucher. WM has been placing geo-targeted ads online and streaming ads to announce the new services, and we're also doing a little bit of social media to help people understand what's going on. And we're working on a mailing to encourage commercial customers to consider rightsizing. They may be interested in that news pricing, and maybe they can add recycling. Recycling is open market, but they can diversify if they want to. They may want to go up or down a size. They haven't talked to a salesperson. I understand why they wouldn't want to, but we can make sure that they're getting the right service level for them if they perhaps have a larger container than they need or service more often than they need. Next slide, please. Residential customers with a standard level of service, which is a ninety-six gallon cart with an extra yard of waste outside of that cart, will see a reduction in price from twenty-eight, twenty-three a month to twenty-three, forty-five. That price does include the franchise. That's a tiny little writing there. The price does include the franchise fee of four percent. For the county's request, customers may also rent an extra cart to containerize that extra waste for seven, seventy-five a month. So in this case, WM will collect both of the carts, but nothing on the ground next to it. And it's not intended to double the size of your service, but to limit windblown litter and to keep animals out of bags. Apparently, whereas we may have bear problems in the foothills of Washoe County, here we've had horses getting into those bags that are outside as big containers. Next slide, please. So WM is still working to cite a transfer station inside of Silver Springs, the community of Silver Springs. And we thought we found a perfect location, had the correct zoning, and it does have infrastructure, which we were excited about. But in the home stretch, we did discover that it doesn't fit with the master plan and the site that we were looking at. It's possible that with a new parcel request, we'll need to ask for a zone change again. And we're working closely with county staff to try to avoid and make sure that we don't end up in the same situation again. And so when that, when that happens, I'll be back here to see y'all again. And next slide, please. A top priority for our team is to be as responsive to customers as possible, so they get what they need the first time, and they don't have to call the county. And yeah, you don't hear from them. We want to get them taken care of. So on March first, we're going to open the doors to a new customer service desk at our Dayton Transfer Station property. Customers will be able to maintain their accounts during business hours, which are Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. Transfer station drop-off hours will remain the same as they are right now. Anyone who prefers to visit the locations in Fernley or Carson can continue to do that as well. We have developed two local phone lines staffed by local employees so that customers can avoid the call center queue. Now, we have hired two employees, but what we've done is taken those new employees and moved them to Carson City so we could take some Carson City employees who are more experienced with WM to service Lyon County. So you're not getting trainees who don't know what's going on. You're getting employees who have been with the company for some time. And customers who prefer not to speak to anyone at all can go online to WM.com. We'll use that, my WM, my WM. And next slide. That is all that I have prepared for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, or Jessica can also give any.
Commissioner Henderson, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a question about the vouchers. Because I was a little confused when I got mine, and mine didn't look like this. So I'm really confused. I don't think so. I meant to bring it anyway. So you're not limit, a customer is not limited to bringing a half yard per visit?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not. And that was one of the things we got on social media comment, because I don't know, somebody started spreading that rumor that you could only use a half yard and you could only use the voucher once, which is weird, because why would it have so many punches on it? You could only use it one time.
When I get home, I'm going to look and make sure what my insight, because I don't remember it looking like that.
Yeah, I want to be really clear. You can use one punch or you can use them all.
Okay.
And in any, you know, if you want to use one punch and then come back two weeks later.
Yeah, because I believe that was our intention, because if he didn't. And also the intention of whether a dome expires, because if you don't have trash one year, you do plant yard next year, and you got more than a half yard.
Absolutely.
So yeah, I appreciate that. I'm glad to see you're working on the Silver Springs transfer station.
Oh, we're so crestfallen. I'm really sorry. You know that I wanted to come here today and tell you that we are so breaking ground right now.
Yeah.
And but, but that did not.
That would have been nice, and I did have a, I'm glad you brought that, because I did have a crack to about you, about waste management, wasting millions of dollars on the golf tournament. We don't have a transfer station up here, but.
I know, and I didn't even get, she didn't get to go. We didn't get to go to that golf tournament either.
That kind of got out of hand down there, too.
I don't know, but I hear that it.
Yeah, in fact, they were, they were calling it the wasted management opens. So, but I appreciate your presentation today, and I, you know, we told you when we, when you guys got the contract, we were going to hold your feet to the fire on it, and we are, but this was a good start, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Could you explain about the community cleanup days?
Yeah, so the community, the neighborhood cleanup days will happen, I mean, I think it's July and October, so they'll be twice. And because this is a non-mandatory area and the contract is funded by customers who pay, it's only intended for customers who have service. So they'll get a sticker in the spring, two stickers, I'm sorry, for items to set out at the curb. And they can use them both in the same cleanup day or separate them if they'd like to. Those instructions will be with the stickers that they get. And so they'll be able to stick, you've got, I use a chair here, so you've got a chair that you don't want anymore. So but you just stick that out of the curb and put that sticker on there, and then a WM collection truck will come by. They won't collect it if it doesn't have a sticker, partially because we don't want just everybody putting everything out, but also because we don't want to accidentally take something that somebody meant to keep and just likes to have a couch next to their mailbox.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chair Hockaday. Appreciate you ladies being here today. Nice to meet you, man. I agree with Chairman, or with Commissioner Henderson that we appreciate the update and we will be continuing that as, as I feel like probably dropped the ball my first couple of years, monitoring and following through on my job regarding the trash pickup. So thank you for being here. And I just want to, for the record, when Waste Management bid on the franchise agreement, our roads were in place and we're not a kept secret. So there's a lot of, I mean, if we could pave every road, I mean, everything from Break a Heart to some of the ones that you've, you've, you had shown on your slides today, they would be in pavement, but that's not possible. So just to throw that out there. And then regarding the picture of the one truck, I get it. It does look like they may have drove off the road there a little bit, and that we can't keep all those sides of the roads perfectly firm, so. But I do want to thank you, and we'll, we'll be requesting, I'm guessing, I don't know if we're going to set a time, but we will be seeing you regularly, I'm sure.
I'm sure. And I do want to, if you don't, may I respond? I don't want to make it look like it's an excuse and we're not trying to service those roads. I just have been trying to create some understanding about why, why the truck may, it may seem like they could have made it down the road, and we're saying we'll come back next week.
Yeah.
And that's our policy in Washoe County and Silver County as well.
And then I don't want to make it look like we're getting a gift here. So if you want my sample one back, it does say sample. I'm sure that's not any good. But if you'd like to take that back, because I'm not accepting a gift from Waste Management today.
You're a firmly person anyway, so you're going to get a different voucher. And but if you'd like to keep that, just so you can discuss it with people.
Fair enough.
Commissioner Keller.
I was looking at your map or the location for the scene green. That's right next to the firehouse, if I'm not.
Thank you. I didn't mention that. And, and that was one of the reasons that we, we were looking at that property is because of the HHW drop off. We thought it would be convenient to be next to them. Yes, that's.
In my opinion, that's, is probably, I couldn't be more disappointed. The community has asked for that to be in the industrial area, not to bring trash into the neighborhoods. We got a lot of growth going down Spruce toward the school. So we're going to expand at that end, so I can understand where you want to be in the center of town, but I don't think the town wants you in the center of it. And so that's, we've always, twelve years ago, we had the community ask if you'd go into the industrial areas to where we don't smell it. If there's, if the wind's blowing, it's not blowing trash throughout the neighborhoods from people bringing it in. So I just want to let you know that that's very disappointing to see that you'd even consider a spot like that.
I appreciate what you're saying, and the county has redirected us to the correct areas. It was zoned. The property had zoning that we thought would work. We were not considering the master plan as we should have, and I apologize for that.
Thank you. The rest looks great. I just don't want, I don't want you to get the wrong opinion, but, but that, that was startling to see that.
Anything further? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No other comments then on Waste Management? Yes, I was going to say, I, I know you were here to talk from the other end of the county.
Yeah, Darrell Brown, I'm the other end of the county.
Right.
We've got all the vouchers out, all the changes, and everything will go into effect March first. We sent out a letter instead of the other thing. All the changes have been made. So it's been fairly smooth. About it. The only thing I have a problem with is the mandatory that you put on them to have recycling. Yeah, a free drop off area for recycling in Yarrington and Smith Valley. And I, it is not economically feasible. There. When we have people sign up at our place, one of their main things they ask us, do you recycle? And we say, no, we don't. Oh, that's so wonderful. They don't want to. Rural areas don't like it. The other part of this is my attendant will have to monitor anybody that comes up there to put recycling into that box, or else everything is for not, because it won't be clean. And so that's, that's my only objection on this. Got any questions?
I, I knew that you would be here for DNS, so appreciate it. Okay, all right. Done with item six. We've gone to item seven, presentation of awards and recognition of accomplishments. Do we have any, looks like? Nope, I thought, I thought the district attorney was coming up. I was waiting for him to make the corner. So obviously, seven is done. Eight Commissioners and County Manager reports. We'll start with Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I had the privilege to go with some high school students that are in the affiliate with the VIDA. Not Vida, Scott, Vita program to this Fernley Senior Center. They're a school group that provides volunteer income tax assistance to senior citizens. Last year, they provided income tax, income tax assistance to over a hundred senior citizens. So I'm very proud of those kids. It was well attended. They had a very nice presentation at the senior center. And so want to give a shout out to them. Also attended a Fernley Boys and Girls Club board meeting and kind of in an unrelated conference, I ended up in Portland at a conference and just very thankful to live in Lyon County, Nevada. And that trip certainly solidified my beliefs that I am a small-town boy. Thank you, Chair. Oh, and also, sorry, I want to wish the Silver, Smith Valley, Yarrington, and Fernley basketball teams, I believe they're the ones that are still alive, and the wrestlers from all of our areas. Good luck in this, in this zone and state tournaments that are forthcoming. And I just want to say, if America ever moves to shut down sports for our kids again, shame on them. We've got to keep our kids active, involved, and just keep that going. And another thing, I attended a gym opening for the Fernley new gym and lunchroom facilities, weight room. And really something that I never thought I'd see in Lyon County, a place that we can host a variety of tournaments, bringing in all kinds of revenues for our small businesses from fast food, hotels. Just all the businesses where those people will be frequenting when they, when they attend the huge tournaments is Fernley will now be able to, Lyon County will now be able to host um, just a plethora of, of events. Um, and just what a facility. If you get a chance to go check out the new gym at Fernley, it's, it's really amazing. Thank you Chair Hockaday.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Keller.
I attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board and it's going really well. They had elected all their officers and I, I have great expectations for them. They seem to be getting it really together. Uh, then we attended the legislative conference. Uh, and I think that was really beneficial. We didn't get home till last night, so I haven't prepared anything on a report yet, so I'll see what the county manager covers and see if there needs to be anything added next meeting. I did attend the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Steering Committee, which we participated all day and I, I got a lot out of it and we pushed some of the stuff forward for uh, the state of Nevada. It didn't necessarily hit to our county, but it helps with the state, which is really good. Uh, some things on fuel. Got to meet with our delegation and that I think was real productive. We, we, we added to what we talked last year, we followed up on that, some of that stuff and added some new stuff to the list. So I think it was really productive. And I think every time you go there, it seems like you make, not only are your connections better, but the relationships that you build, uh, the knowledge that you gain, you build on top of it. It's kind of like, you know, if you go to a math class and you learn how to add and subtract and everything else, but by the time you're done, you're going to, no calculus. So you got to start somewhere and I think every time we go, we just get more information, more knowledge every time we're, we're there. That's all I got.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I attended the Dayton Valley Conservation District Board meeting, the Silver Springs Advisory Board, and also attended the National NACO. And I echo Scott's thoughts on that. It was a very productive few days, made a lot of connections and reinforced connections with other uh, commissioners, not only in our state, but across the country and with our congressional delegates.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended the Mount House Advisory Board meeting on February 6th. The two main topics were of course, traffic safety on Highway 50 and the community center, and there is a high level of frustration about the community center, which we'll be discussing, a future agenda item. I also attended the Campo meeting actually yesterday. Item of discussion was the local road safety plan, which Campo was working on now, and it was brought up about the, the tragedy, uh, Highlands and 50 where we lost a 10-year-old girl. Then, I believe three days later, a 14-year-old was crossing the street in Carson City and got hit by a car and was killed. I, I, I don't remember the exact number of fatalities that we've had this year, but 52% of them had been pedestrian. Which is just a shocking number to me. So please be careful. People cross the street wherever they want to out here. So just, just be alert and be aware. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. A quick reminder, annual training, I believe today is the last day to get online and get your annual training done for multiple items. I attended the Libra B L M presentation in about East Walker Road and Mineral County's solar farm. That was a, a great presentation by B L M, somewhat contentious group, but a lot of questions, a lot of input from the community here in Mason Valley. Also attended the Walker River Irrigation District Meeting and a lot of information about their projection for water, rain, snow, and of course, the the, the item I always like about weather is, jeez, if it doesn't snow more, the snowpack will be impacted. It's like, really? I would have never known that. Also the Smith Valley Park Board meeting and had a lot of information come up on that about the arena and working with the Smith Valley Rotary Club to get things accomplished along with the county and making sure that we have all of the proper uh, safety devices and fences in place before we have any activities go on this spring and summer. So, um, we have Mr. Haskin, if you would like to press on with your report, you're, you've got the floor.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, for the record. First off, I want to apologize for not being at the last meeting. I was sick, so I, I was on Zoom, but I figured I wouldn't spread that to, to everybody, so. I do apologize for that. Try not to miss, miss commission meetings. I want to thank Commissioner Hock, Chair Hockaday for bringing up the solar projects, just to let the board aware, let the board know, we are tracking a number of those projects and we are working with R C I on, on some responses back for the comment periods for both the Libra Solar and for the, um, the one here in North Mason Valley as well. Those comment periods are pretty tight usually, so it's kind of tough to get them on a board agenda. Um, the way I'm approaching that is talking about um, impacts to county infrastructure and facilities and then focusing on what we have in our public lands policy as well. Um, and because we do address those types of projects in our public lands policy. So um, just want the, the board to be aware, I will be giving an update on that after, after we do get those comments and for those projects. Um, we want to make the board aware that the appraisal did come back on the parcel in Dayton at Traditions and the appraisal came back higher than, um, than our purchase agreement to what we, what we agreed to buy it for. So we will be proceeding forward with that. The appraisal came back just over four million dollars and purchasing it for just under four million. So, so we're excited about that and happy that, that that's moving along and hope to, hope to see some progress there. I did attend the NACO National Conference. It was a really good conference, learned a lot. The meetings that we had with our congressional delegation were excellent, uh, very productive. Really want to thank all of our congressional delegation, Congressman Amade's office, Congressman Orsford's office, Senator Rosen's office and Senator Cortez Masto's office. Those meetings were really good and I, I think, um, very valuable. So we're excited for that. And then another thing I was going to talk about, I can't remember where it was. So I will bring it up at the next, the next meeting. Any questions?
Questions? No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item nine, elected official reports. Do you have any elected official? No, Sheriff shaking his head. Alright.
Can we?
Yes.
Can we note that in the record?
Item 10, appointed official reports. Okay, Mr. Homestead.
For, for you, District Court is moving along. It looks like it'll probably be done in June, hopefully, on that project. It's looking really nice. Mount House, we've got the HVAC all installed and working, got cabinets in there and kind of due to go home soon and they're fixing, there was a leak in the ceiling, we're fixing that and so hopefully by the end of March, we'll have that part of the building done, so that'll be open for them to use. We're working on Silver City Community Center. We have a person living in a motorhome on our property found out that we thought it was somebody else's property, it was our property. And so I've been assigned to get it cleaned up. Um, so I'm working with Sheriff's Office to see if we can maybe move that person along to somebody else's property.
B L M's good for that.
Yeah. Um, Silver City Senior Center, we're replacing the fire alarm system there. We've had a bunch of false alarms on that system. My phone ringing almost every night because there's a false alarm on it. So we're replacing that system and they've almost got it done. They're working out some errors with the because it all, all goes through cell phones now to the, to their notification center. So we're working on that. Fernley, we're taking over that contract, the landscaping there, the parks people and, and Dayton are. And so that contract will not be issued this year and our guys will be doing it. But take, doing that, we're going to, um, we talked about putting a little building over there to store some equipment over there, but we decided to be easier to buy a enclosed trailer and maybe put in the secured parking area, the Sheriff's Office there. That way the people can go there and not have to haul a bunch of stuff up there every time they go to work. So I'll be bringing that back next meeting for you guys to approve the purchase. I was excited. We had a young lady from Yarrington High School call us and she wanted to do a class project. She lives out in Mason. And she wanted to clean up the Mason Town Park with some volunteers. So she's taking that on, we're assisting her with finding some equipment for um, basketball hoops and stuff like that. And talk about painting, maybe the awnings and cleaning the graffiti up and weeds and all that. So we was excited to see a young person step up and want to take it on as a class project. So we look forward to helping her. Um, stagecoach, we've got, I'm waiting on the last of the bids for the HVAC system, so we can get that stagecoach new center heating system redone. And then once that's done, we can proceed with fixing the roof. So those will all be done in this budget period. And then we met on Fernley to 50% done on the drawings for Fernley Justice Court remodel. So let's go along the wall too. Any questions?
Questions? And I do appreciate our discussion on the Dressler Park for the court there. I really would appreciate if we could move along with that, if we have to use in-house workers to seal and paint and put in the post and stuff, so we can get that going sometime before the, maybe before the summer opens up and we can have a place for the kids and other folks to play pickleball and tennis and basketball. Be great. I appreciate the, the input from you on that. Thank you.
Chairman Hockaday.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Um, did I hear you say we're taking over the Fernley Parks?
No, no, Fernley, our, our Fernley facilities. That's right now.
Oh, oh, okay. The Fernley County Facilities.
Yes.
Okay.
Center, the.
Alright, yeah, okay, no. I, for some reason I thought I heard Fernley Parks and I'm like, what?
I would be hiring another person last year and where it's changed on that was to take over that contract.
Okay, I just thank you for working with me on that.
No further questions, thank you. Uh, move on to item 11, Advisory Board Reports. See any hands up? Oh, okay, we have a hand.
Aaron Lopez, for the record, I just wanted to announce that we're doing our annual training, tentatively pointed out April 13th to do it. I just have to get a couple of confirmation from staff to make sure that that date will work. Um, and is required for all appointed officers of the board and anyone who was newly appointed this year um, to attend the training and it will be over in Silver Springs. So I just wanted to let you guys know and hopefully we can get a handful of you guys to come. And then also we'll invite the city of Yarrington, city of Fernley and any board officials that want to join us, we invite everyone to come.
Uh, Commissioner Keller.
Do you think on that training that we can set up a, a sample of, uh, like a planning issue of something that we've discussed before, that's already come before the board and show how it, what we, what they should be looking for, what, you know, how, how to proceed with it, because they get it and they really, a sample would be, you know, they can work through it and kind of reflect back on it.
Some more of an advisory board level of their process.
Right, well, show something, maybe something that was controversial or something that the advisory board in the past said in one thing, then it went to the planning and it changed and then to the, you know, show how it morphed at the end and, and why. And that way they can kind of understand how that process works, but take something from the past, not something that we're looking at.
Yeah, we can do that. Um, just to give you a kind of an overall overview of that day, um, the district attorney will start, he'll do his presentation of overall open meeting log. I usually do the middle part of the handbook training and like the processes and procedures and then we do um, end it with the planning. So if you do have any other suggestions of any of those other components that you would like to see or like if you know that your boards are struggling of that, they could use some more information, please let us know. We can kind of cater around the training towards those goals, we can do that.
Yeah, I was kind of looking like, what, what should they be looking for in a planning issue, you know, for health and safety and stuff like that? And so they can give us better information moving forward. Thanks.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and part of the, part of the training, does that include what the role of the advisory boards are?
We can definitely, yeah, I, we, if there's more, there's different roles and responsibilities, but if you want us to touch more on specific elements, if you want to reach out to me and let me know what those are, we can highlight that level a little bit more because there's so much.
Okay.
Just let me know.
I'll talk to you offline about that.
Anything, Commissioner Jacobson? Okay, and this will be on Zoom also, so you'll be notifying everybody on that.
Yeah, and I'll be sending out a more detailed email to, to everyone later, but I just wanted to let you know, so I could gather your information, your interests.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I think we need to go back to item 10. Mr. Carriola wants to talk.
Oh, okay. Mr. Carriola, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Louis Carriola, Community Development Director. Just a couple of quick updates. Uh, first, I do want to personally apologize for filling item 14A today. That was supposed to be the code enforcement regulations as they apply to active construction sites. Um, I did do a, a bit of research to start this and I, I found some areas where we can improve. Uh, I'm glad to hear that some of our public has recognized some of our efforts thus far. Um, but we've had a couple tumultuous weeks in community development, including the submitted retirement of our code enforcement office. So my officer Johnson, Michael Johnson, will be finishing his employ with Lyon County on March 1. I hope to see him on the golf course. It's going to be tough for us though. Um, I'll be personally assuming a number of his responsibilities until we're able to fill that position. So in community development, we still will have openings in, as a senior planner and code enforcement. Uh, as far as an update for some items that have been requested by the board in the past, uh, Mr. Keller had asked for a new map on our website associated with G I S that identify larger projects and major projects. And we have begun that process working with our G I S consultants. We're hoping to have a beta version for staff review by the end of next week.
Yes, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you Chairman Hockaday. Mr. Carriola, by absolute, I had, I have no problem with delaying that agenda item and I, I certainly hope that he's not retiring because of that. I, I wanted the public to hear all that he's doing and all that Lyon County does. I, I'm by no means second guessing what we're doing. I want when we get public comment and they say, you know, we're not doing this, or we get phone calls, um, I, I want them to hear what we are doing and, and during public comment, it just limits us to what we can and can't respond to. So, um, I, I think they're doing a great job. So, um, sorry to hear that we're losing him and, uh, no problem on pushing that agenda item. Push it back as far as you want. I just away we go.
We'll, we'll get there. As you know, the, the code enforcement uh, update to our ordinance is also on our to-do list. So we'll see where, when we get there.
Right on. So yeah, no problem at all.
And I want to thank you for, for what you're doing on that G I S and the mapping and stuff. Thank you very much. It'll help me out as a commissioner too, so thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Have we ever looked into software that might make the code enforcement job a little more automated and less labor intensive?
You know, we, we do have the Sage program that we use for building and planning applications as well. There are opportunities, I think I mentioned this during the code enforcement workshop on October 28th, 23. We can better utilize the software we have. I believe at this point, Officer Johnson was used to a, a standard of work that he had been executing for a number of years. And that kind of transition into using a digital platform wasn't as smooth as it might be when we bring in a new employee. So my intent is to fully implement the Sage capabilities.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, thank you, sir. We've run through eleven already. Twelve consent agenda action will be taken on a lot of items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action and without extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Uh, we have items twelve A through twelve F. Any commissioners want to pull or discuss?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item twelve D to discuss.
Delta.
Delta.
Okay, we've requested pull twelve Delta. Anybody else? Commissioners, any public input to pull? Don't see anything there. Uh, so it looks like we're going to be doing twelve A through twelve F minus twelve D. Do I have a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approved the consent agenda items twelve A to twelve F with pulling item twelve D, Delta.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. So now we will move on with twelve. Oh, yes. Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
Just here for twelve.
Oh, he's he's here to go.
Okay.
Do you need to read it?
All right. Twelve D for possible action, approve contract for the Dzima. Uh, Aguilar Garden Services for the amount of eight hundred per month for the maintenance of the medians on Dayton Valley Road and to authorize the county manager to sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize. I could have taken care of this with a phone call, but people were gone. But I I the only question I have is what was the cost last year? How much of an increase do we have yet or did we? Say them out. That's what I wanted to hear. That was that was the only question I had.
Okay. Easy enough. So so we need the motion on twelve B to pass that one.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approve a contract for the Zima Aguilar garden services and the amount of eight hundred dollars per month for the maintenance of the medium on Dayton Valley Road and authorize the county manager to sign.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say, oh. Oh, public comment. Or good catch. No comment. So we will then move on to the vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Down to the regular agenda, action will be taken on a lot of them unless otherwise noted. Thirteen from the comptroller and thirteen A for possible action, approve an amendment to the Fernley Justice Court Design Agreement with Paul Cavan Architect LLC in the amount of twenty one thousand five hundred dollars for civil engineering services for a utility survey and site utility design to extend a new fire suppression water line to the building. Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lion County Comptroller, for the record, you're wondering what this has to do with the Kansas City Chiefs and no, but nothing really.
Who who are the Chiefs? Aren't they just Swifties?
Uh, with that being said, we'll ignore that comment. Thank you. With that being said, as part of the the remodeling expansion of Fernley Justice Court, we're going to be required under code to put a sprinkler line in the building. And we need to know exactly where the utility lines are and what the design should be. And so the architect um, is recommending that we bring in. Uh, they have a civil engineer to come in and do it. They are not putting any charges on top of it and overhead from the architect. Strictly just the engineering cost for that. So normally they would have added their costs, but we had a discussion about that. So it is something we're going to need to be able to to do the connections that we have. And will be required by the city of Fernley as well as part of the council.
Questions, Commissioner Jacobson.
All right, so congratulations to you. Thank you, Chairman Hockney. Congratulations to you, Chiefs. I went in to chat with him this morning and he was listening to Taylor Swift music. Oh, my gosh. How far have you fallen, big guy? So, um, I'm take it that this was probably an oversight by the architect at one time?
I, yes.
Um, and then I when I was going through this. Paul Galvin, Architect LLC is pleased to present the following additional services fee proposal for your consideration. Could they word that just a little bit different, maybe? Uh, there's no way they can be pleased to present a twenty one thousand dollar bill.
Yes. I'll have a discussion of.
All right, thank you.
Anything further? Because I had basically the same question is how do you over, you know, overlook needing to have this fire uh, line put in and, um, so.
I I my understanding is they thought it would be a simple process on the design, but when they ended up going getting into the design and seeing what size of a water connection already came into the building, they're like, oh, this is going to trigger civil design at the city of Fernley for the uh, building room. So they ended up having to bring in for this because the sizing is different than they anticipated.
Okay. Still don't like it. They need to, you know, a little bit more professional and look, look forward to what they really might need and what might be there. So, um, not much we can say about getting it done now. And also I always said that when the the professional teams come to watch me do my job, I'll watch them do theirs. Now, okay, yes.
I just wanted to ask if they've looked at all the other utilities to see if anything else needs to be upsized as well.
I will double check with that.
Very good point. Okay, anything further? Any public input? Seeing none, we'll lay you off the hook. Anything further that you wanted to say on any of this?
Can we strike the Taylor Swift comment?
All right, okay. We'll move on. So I'm looking for a motion for the twenty one thousand five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion on thirteen A?
I move that we approve an amendment to the Fernley Justice Court Design Agreement with Paul Cavan Architect LLC in the amount of twenty one thousand five hundred for civil engineering services for a utility survey and site utility design to extend a new fire suppression water line to the building.
Okay.
A second then.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Fourteen A has been pulled. Fifteen, we have Advisory Board Reports, fifteen A for possible action, appoint up to two members to the Lion County Fair and Rodeo Board with one term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and the second term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty six. And we have the letters in our packet there, or applications, I should say. Any discussion on this? Commissioner Public? No, then I'll take a motion for appointment on Lion County Fair Board, Rodeo Board.
Mr. Chair, I will move that we appoint Derek Haas to Lion County Fair and Rodeo Board with a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And that we appoint Eric Glasgow to Lion County Fair and Rodeo Board with a term expired December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
All second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Harrison, a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We will move on to fifteen B for possible action, appoint one member to the Silver Springs Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Like we have one application or applicant, I should say. Do I have a motion for that appointment?
I move that we appoint Ammon Turbining to the Silver Springs Advisory Board with the term expiring December twen- December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move on to fifteen C. For possible action, appoint a chairman for the first meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission. Any? Oh, okay.
Stacy Lambert, for treasure. Um, I just basically on our last meeting, it's kind of a learning curve, but we appointed our chairman and our vice chair for the twenty twenty three term instead of through the first meeting of twenty twenty four. And in that interim time, Wes has, he was started our our meeting for us last year and was appointed the chair, but it has since moved spots with that committee effective January. So I'd like to maybe ask to appoint Scott Keller as our chair to start our meeting at our RTC Board. Um, and have you approve an appointment for him just through that first meeting? So then the board has um, a chair at the time we start the meeting and then we can appoint it during that meeting.
Actions are right during that meeting, right? The first thing we do.
Yes.
Okay, um. Any comments from commissioners here? Public input? If not, um, sounds good to me. If I get a motion, I will move on with this. Do I have a motion for the appointment of a chair for the first meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission?
Chairman Hockney, I'll make a motion to, uh, prove our, uh, to appoint as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Commissioner Keller will be the chair for the first meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission. Congratulations on that.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Just a little bit of your head.
Yeah. It'll last about ten seconds. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on for, oh, yes, yes.
Call for public comment on that.
Yes, he did. I did. Thank you for keeping me straight, though. Uh, number sixteen. Again, we're back up with Ms. Limberg for possible action, approve it to canvas the vote from the February sixth, twenty twenty four presidential preferred election for NRS two ninety three point three eighty seven. Go ahead.
Stacy Lambert, Sir Treasure, for the record. Um, our first election, it is definitely a team sport. I have to thank everyone that assisted us, facilities, the road department, VIPs basically takes the county to do this right and and we kind of got a practice run with this first PPP because our turnout was very low. But I think it went very smoothly. Um, we didn't have a lot of issues. We learned a lot and um, I'm open for any questions or concerns that any of you or the public have, uh, in regards to our last elections.
No. Public input? Seeing none. Move on here for a motion to approve the canvas. Yes, Commissioner Keller.
I'm up to. I'm.
Here it is.
I'm up to bring the canvas and vote for February sixth, twenty twenty four presidential preferred election for NRS two nine three three eight seven.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Yes, Commissioner Keller.
I do have a comment. I I I hate to see that we spent our last I heard was five point six million dollars for this practice run. That didn't do any good. I wish that the state would, uh, stay out of the the party's business at the presidential thing and save us some money because this county could have used five point six million dollars. I'm sure if they just want to waste it.
Yeah, I think they learned a lot being the first one. Um, but we're all, we all learned a lot and I I agree with you that yes, it did waste a lot of our our time and money. And I think the legislation will be addressing that the next term.
Anything further? No public comment. We've got our commissioner comment. And we will move on to recess to reconvene as Walker River Weed Control District Board. Uh, public participation, no action be taken on any items to those properly agendas. It's anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at anytime during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. We have item eighteen appointment. Eighteen A for possible action, appoint up to three members to the Walker River Weed Control Board with two terms expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty six. And one term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty five. We have one applicant, William Kling. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I was just up here for
Oh.
Any questions you might have.
Okay. Do we have any question? Any public input? Seeing none, then I will look for a motion for an appointment.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we appoint William Kling to Walker River Weed Control Board with a term expire in December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, and we'll round this one out with the public participation. Our action be taken on anything at this time, though it may be returned to. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation ask to state their name for the record and will be limited three minutes. And we conducted public comment after each discussion item each agenda action item. And do we have any further public comment for the Walker River Weed Control District Board? Seeing none. We will adjourn to reconvene as the Lion County Board of Commissioners. Item twenty, I'm gonna move down the line here. Commissioner Jacobs, do you have an agenda, agenda request?
No, sir.
Commissioner Keller.
No.
Commissioner Hendricks.
No.
Commissioner Henderson.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, for for the second meeting in March, I think that'll give us enough time. Like to have an agenda item to discuss the Mount House Community Center. Including possible direction to staff on that. And then at some future date, I'd also like to have an agenda item for us to review our public lands policy.
Okay. Anything further? I don't have any agenda requests. So, um, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Hendricks.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Henderson.
Um, there are cupcakes on the back table. Please eat them.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. Uh, Commissioner Keller. Nothing. Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockney. I just want to thank our commissioners who volunteered to go back to Washington DC and represent Lion County. Um, I think there's probably some benefit in sending the same commissioners if they're willing, um, as they know the ropes. And they know they they are familiar with the faces. And so I think I I do believe that some continuity in going to that um, is very beneficial. And so I just want to thank them for taking time away from their families and and traveling. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad they made it back unharmed from Washington DC.
Safer than Kansas City.
Okay, uh, anything further from the commissioners? I just had a uh, final comment here. I had mentioned the BLM presentation about Libra and the solar farm over in Mineral County. I do have information here. If anybody does want to respond. Uh, this was presented at the presentation uh, the other night, but anybody that does want to get information on how to respond to BLM on this project, please do so. And you have until the fourth of March. Yes.
Sorry, uh, um, and and of course for going back as well. I didn't mean to just include the commissioners. I know that, uh, your wife was a busy lady while you were gone too. So sorry for leaving you out of that. Appreciation.
Okay, we'll go on to item twenty two, public participation. No action will be taken on any item till it's properly agendaized. It is anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their names for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. So final public participation. Seeing none on Zoom. Seeing none on Zoom and nobody in here, we will move on to, is there a closed session today? Outstanding. Um, and we will move to adjournment at ten ten.